On and you are speaking into the mic. Voice activated and you need to be a couple inches from the mic. If you're not, you're not being heard by those viewers at home and if you're not being heard by those viewers at home, my phone rings a lot telling me that you're not being heard. So with that, roll call please.
Counselor Tate here.
Demus.
Here.
Dadi.
Here.
Gilata.
Here.
Savage.
Here.
Wes.
Here.
Halter.
Here.
Windor.
Here.
Mayor Como.
Here, councilors. I would entertain a motion to approve the revised agenda before you hear tonight.
So move it.
Councilman Shalata?
So move it.
We have a motion there second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show no opposed. And councilors, I had entertained a motion to approve the minutes from the city council meeting of April 2nd, 2019.
I'll make a motion to approve that close minutes for April 2nd, 2019.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We do have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show no opposed. Councilors, we have one item in our bid openings today. That's the 2019 weed mitigation program. It looks like we have one bidder being Weed Management Solutions out of Rock Springs, Wyoming. We do have a bid bond attached. Total bid. Eighty-nine thousand, nine ninety-six and fifty cents. Eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six dollars and fifty cents. This bid will be turned over to staff for review. With that, the next item on our agenda is going to be the appointments section. And Mr. President, I submit to you the name of Billy Shalata to serve first term Countywide Board of Health.
Counsel, Billy Shalata has stepped up to serve on the Countywide Board of Health. Do we have a motion to approve?
So move, Mr. President.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Roll call please.
Counselor Wes.
Yes.
Halter.
Yes.
Windor.
Yes.
Tate.
Yes.
Demus.
Yes.
Dadi.
Yes.
Gilata. Yes. Savage.
Yes.
Mayor, you have your appointment.
Okay, counselor, don't let us down. Okay. No, we're happy to have Mr. Shalata there and he knows it well. I appreciate that, Mr. President, members of the council, and I also submit to you the name of Mike Lepiccolo to serve first term on the Police Civil Service Commission.
Counsel, Mike Lepiccolo has stepped up to serve on the Police Civil Service Commission. Do we have a motion to approve?
So move, Mr. President.
You, do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Roll call please.
Counselor Halter?
Yes.
Windor?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Demus?
Yes.
Dadi?
Yes.
Gilata?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Wes?
Yes.
Mayor Como, you have your appointment.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. This is going to bring us on to the presentations and proclamations section. Item number one, the Sweetwater County Library System YOCON event. And here he comes. If you could give us your name and make sure the microphone's on and it's all yours.
Do, do, let's see. Ah, it is working. Excellent.
There you go.
Hello, everyone. My name is Aaron Volner. I'm with the Sweetwater County Library System, specifically the White Mountain Library Branch here in Rock Springs. Thank you so much for the opportunity to get up here and tell you guys about this event today. We really like, like people to know about this. So YOCON is basically a fan convention. So if you know about things like the Salt Lake Comic Con or Denver, things like that, this is our, our small slice of that. So we're trying to bring some of that to our local community here. It's a chance for people who just really have a love of fictional worlds and what we call fandoms and things like that to come together and just celebrate that love and really engage with each other. And it's just a great way to get the community out and get them engaged. It's a great event for kids. We've got all kinds of cool stuff going on this year. We've got different panel topics going on about some of the more popular things. We've got like Star Wars. A few of you may have heard of that one. Things like that. Several of the local vendors are going to be out, like The Dugout and Terry Lee Jewelry, and there are some other ones who are going to be out there. The Dugout is actually hosting some gaming tournament things there. So there's going to be some gaming stuff going on. And we've got a cosplay contest. And for anyone not familiar, cosplay is like costuming but based on characters from fictional worlds. And it's going to be a really exciting event and we hope that lots of people can come out for it. So thank you for the opportunity.
Aaron, this sounds really, really cool. We're not going to get sued over the name, right? YOCON? It's a bad joke.
Well, I think because it doesn't have the comic in there, we should be fine.
No, this sounds really interesting. I'm glad to see the library system's taking on this on and and offering some opportunity for, for those individuals that have the desire to get out and participate. And you're, we're going to be April 27th, 11:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. at the White Mountain Library, correct?
That's right.
Questions, councilors? Now, I, I, I think that's going to be a great panel screening, co- cosplay contest, Magic the Gathering Tournament, and the Ultimate Trivia Challenge. Sounds to be quite the event. So get out. As we said before, people say there's nothing to do in Sweetwater County. This is another event. You just have to know it's there and we appreciate you coming down and spreading the word, putting this on.
Thank you.
Thanks, Aaron. The second presenter up tonight, Greater Little Mountain Coalition. Joy Bannon couldn't be here. I believe we have Craig. Craig Thompson, Monty Morlock's here with us tonight. And Craig, I'm going to turn the microphone over to you. We do have your handouts. And I think you're ready to roll up there.
Thank you. How's that? I didn't see the little light go on, so. Mayor Como has probably heard this from me before, but if you'll permit me a personal statement. I want to thank you for your public service. Just, you know, I didn't come across a whole fleet of luxury car vehicles when I came through the parking lot. And I assume then you're obviously not in this for the money. And I, and I think just like all the rest of the public servants, you folks deserve the appreciation and I want to thank you for your public service. So I am a volunteer for the Greater Little Mountain Coalition. I want to make two promises to you. First, I'm not going to ask you for money. And second, I'm going to keep this to 15 minutes. So you can time your watches. So I'm going to be cheap and quick. What we're going to do is first I'm going to tell you a little bit about the coalition. And then I'm going to tell you something about the issue. I'm going to ask you to watch a 10-minute video which gives you sort of a visual description of the land that we're going to be talking about. And then I'm going to make the ask. Okay? That's what, what I've got in mind. So with me tonight, not only is Monty Morlock with the, with the steelworkers, but also we've got Josh Corsi with the Muley Fanatics Foundation. And we, we have Nick, Steve Martin with the Bow Hunters of Wyoming. The Greater Little Mountain Coalition also has organizational members, the Wyoming Wildlife Federation and Trout Unlimited and the Teddy Roosevelt Conservation Partnership. But basically, we're 2,500 of your favorite neighbors, we hope. We are your coworkers. We are your neighbors. We are miners. We are professionals. We're hunters. We're anglers. We are backpackers and hikers. And we are people who appreciate the public lands. And we are people who are coming to you tonight to ask for your support in defending these public lands. Here's the issue. Seventy percent of the lands in this county are controlled by the federal government. They're managed by the Bureau of Land Management in our best interest. And that means that out of the Rock Springs District Office, three and a half million acres are managed. And they have a plan. And they are coming up now, developing, and I think it's been several years in the making, a resource management plan that will guide their decisions, set the framework and the guidelines for the decisions that they're going to make on these public lands, your public lands, for the next decade. And the Greater Little Mountain Coalition believes that there is a chunk of those public lands that deserve special consideration. So if you'll look at your map here, I'll describe these lands in detail. Basically, on the south, the border is the Utah Colorado State Border with Wyoming. On the east, Highway 430. On the west, the Flaming Gorge National Recreation Area, which is managed by the Forest Service. And on the north, by the checkerboard boundary with one single exception, and that is in the Lower Sage Creek area, we extend four miles into, into the checkerboard. So that's what, that's the checkerboard looking expanse there of land in Area 3. One thing I also want to note is that in Area 6, the salt wells and the benches off of Pine Mountain, this area is available for energy development and there are existing leases here. And we feel that this area deserves consideration, but not the same kinds of considerations that the others. And those considerations are listed underneath the map there. Okay? All right. So what I'd like to do now is show you a video to give us all a better idea of what we're dealing with here in the, in the Greater Little Mountain area. So I think all I have to do is click this once and we should go.
I'm a Wyoming native. I was born and raised in the Rock Springs-Green River area. Left after high school, served in the military. Upon my service to the U.S. Army, decided that we had found an opportunity where maybe that system could be improved to allow for more dollars to be generated, to be spent locally by local folks to make a local difference. You know, I think, I think it came at a stage in life where, especially having your own kids, you get the recognition of somebody's got to be doing something. And for a species as iconic as the American West, the mild deer, at the end of the day, you, you feel a sense of obligation that goes beyond your take of the resource. What I do for a living, we have Infinity Power Controls, which is the energy industry. After going to University of Wyoming, had opportunities to move to other places and decided to come home. I thought it was a great place for my wife and I to come back. I don't think that when you think about southwest Wyoming, obviously you've got the red desert, but when you go certain parts of southwest Wyoming, say like the Little Mountain area or down in where there's a lot of cedar trees, where you have, by the Flaming Gorge and things like that, it's not the idea that it's desert. It's actually a very great ecosystem. You take a look at what we have. We spend all of our time basically on, on the, ob- obviously, when, when I was a teenager and first started hunting, I killed my first deer on the there were so many deer there, you actually cannot imagine how many deer were there. It's just, um, very appreciative. My dad teaching us to do things that live up was a great part of that. With only about 500,000 people in our little square state, you could be about three or four miles away from anything and do just about anything you want to do. I take people all the time when they, they come from other parts of the country that have never seen that type of wildlife. And we just go for drives. You may or may not see another vehicle. That's, that's really neat. And you can always find elk, deer, antelope.
I think that you can connect outside like you can't connect anywhere else. If you take your kids out, we took our kids out fishing, camping when they were little, and you get to know them a lot better. You turn everything off. You're sitting around a campfire. You can really connect. And now, as they're growing up, that's a resource for them to get out, relax, and disconnect from life.
Our wild things and our wild places is what makes Wyoming special. And I don't think it has anything to do with taking. I think it has everything to do with being able to see it. It's a pretty unique area with a landscape that's pretty diverse from the desert floors to the, the mountain tops full of pines and conifers. It's, it's, it's an area that's unique to be able to carry from one end of the spectrum to the other and host all of those critters within there and world-class critters. The amount of revenue that has been allocated in the Little Mountain area over the last two decades is nothing short of profound. From stream restorations to cheat grass treatments to prescription burns to research projects, the list is long and the list is many. In addition to the dollars allocated, the time and sweat equity of numerous organizations, volunteers, and agencies has been stellar. There's a lot of beauty here, people. They don't see it or they don't look for it, but if you're here for a while, you'll find it guaranteed. You'll find it. Story I've heard, our great-great-grandpa came over from Scotland. And he came over, I guess he got a job in town, Rock Springs delivering groceries. He'd save up enough money and bring two family members over. He'd save up enough money and bring two more over. And he did that, I guess, until he got them all here, but how they, why they picked this area to homestead, I never heard, did hear that, but I think they had a good catch there. Must have known what they were looking for. We're the fifth generation on the Ramsey Ranch out here. It's 36 miles south of town. Just right at the foothill of Little Mountain. We like to take care of the land. We do our best to manage it. We do appreciate this land because it is multi-use. We put our cows out during the summer. They can graze up on top of Little Mountain. You know, without that, it'd be really tough to ranch just on the deeded ground though, so. The public access is a lot. We appreciate that. We wouldn't want to rule out any stakeholder in it, not hear any voice, but I don't think anybody wants to see Little Mountain grow up.
Fifteen percent of total energy that's produced in the United States is produced in Wyoming.
Wyoming, if they were a country of their own, would be the third largest producer of energy in the world. That's pretty big.
My term is, there is a couple major threats to, to the South Rock Springs area. And the biggest threat today, my opinion, is oil and gas. People want the quality jobs of oil and gas and the minerals produced. Eighty percent of the economy's Sweetwater County's minerals. Those, those commodities produce quality jobs for the people living. So we need to protect those jobs. But once people have a, a, a good income that those jobs provide, the next thing they look at is recreation.
So, so one of the things that keeps people in Wyoming is recreation. If you really take a look at what we're doing, recreation has, is one of the reasons it keeps us here.
We would like to see a balance between industry and conservation because we make our living history. But we also enjoy the outdoors. We've raised our kids in the outdoors and we're now taking our grandkids out, enjoying it. And they need that. Need to be able to go out, find themselves outdoors and accomplish outside, get away from society, enjoy what's out there and huge resource.
So I work in the oil field for two weeks and then on my week off, I spend all of my time fishing. So the energy sector is really important to my friends and my family. A lot of us end up working out there. And it's really important to have a balance between the energy sector and the conservation because we all do enjoy fishing, hunting, exploring all, like out in these areas. But that is the way that we're making our living as well.
What Wyoming is for right now is obviously we have energy production, but people stay in Wyoming because they like the outdoors. And to have the outdoors, you have to have places like the Mountain area to keep that going.
The question then becomes how much are we expected to produce and what are we expected to give up? Greater Little, Greater Little Mountain area where I'm not willing to give it up.
I mean, quite frankly, at the end of the day, God's not making any more earth. And so those special places like that, you know, they're, they're on the radar. And it, it takes a special effort to try to keep them that way. It's a fight worth fighting. I think everybody around here appreciates the area, so I'm glad that they support it and I hope that continues and work with some of these issues that we are facing today. You know, keep it for the next generation. I think it'd be good.
I think it's important because I think we all need to make our voices heard and let people know that we want this conserv-
And I'll tell you where I enjoy going, going most is to the places where there aren't structures and there aren't people and you can get away from all that. And this state has that. And I hope we can keep it that way. But again, that's just a tangible item. It's a photograph. And that area is so much more than a photograph. It's an experience. Little Mountain in one word? Majestic. From the desert floors to the high mountain peaks, Little Mountain encompasses a terrain and an ecosystem found nowhere else. Truly, it is the crown jewel of southwest Wyoming.
Josh and Monty will be available to sign autographs afterward. Steve and I ended up on the cutting room floor and so we're just going to be moping around in the back, having been denied our six seconds of fame. So here's our request. Here's our ask. What we'd like from the council is that they join with the Green River City Council and with the Sweetwater County Commission in supporting our vision for this Greater Little Mountain area. We've taken the liberty to draft a letter. We are not married to the language in this letter. We have no ownership over this. But we would like you to consider this letter and we would appreciate very much your support. I want to make two things clear. The first one is this is truly a unique area. This is where the sagebrush steppe of this dry desert country transitions into a conifer aspen forest. And then it transitions into a landscape above the tree line. I don't know where else we find that, you know, but it's the only part in southwest Wyoming that I'm familiar with. The second thing is this does not obligate the council to advocate on any future proposal or for a development project. We're not, this is not an anti-oil and gas. It's not pro-oil and gas. It's not anti-coal or pro-coal. What it says basically is we think this area is pretty special. It, this does not obligate the BLM to do anything. They make their own decisions. We're just saying, please make these decisions in consideration of the, of, of our proposal and with the support of the Sweetwater County Commission, the Green River City Council, and hopefully the Rock Springs City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Josh, Steve, glad to have you here as well. Counselors, any questions? Of course, this country's kind of near and dear to my heart. I'm a, I'm a supporter of energy development in a responsible manner, but I, I also agree that there's certain areas such as this that need to be off limits. It is. It's, it's, if you've been out there, it's a unique place in the middle of these borders that you'll find nowhere else on earth. And one of those areas is actually, Jackson Ramsey is a cousin of mine. The Ramsey Ranch is, is actually Norma Ramsey is my dad's sister, so she's my aunt. So we spend a lot of time out there. And I can tell you that it's nice to go out. I'm probably out there every, probably every weekend, I would say. Either a Saturday or a Sunday, either at the Ramsey Ranch or just exploring and getting away from cell phone service and, and people. And we don't have many opportunities to protect those critical habitat areas and those gems that we have in, especially southwest Wyoming. I have taken upon myself to draft a letter already and will present it to the city council for their, their review and we hope to support you in those efforts and join forces with the county commissioners, the city of Green River and the many, the many residents that feel the same way. So I appreciate what you do and Josh, Steve, what you guys do with, with our wildlife and Trout Unlimited. We don't get many opportunities and we need to get this right. So I appreciate that. Counsel, questions, suggestions? Are you okay with that? I'll, I'll send you out a letter and if everyone's okay, we will forward that to you, Craig.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Well done. Okay, thanks, Craig, for that. That's going to move us on to the public hearing section of our agenda. And from the Housing Authority Council, we have a public hearing to discuss the Rock Springs Housing Authority proposed changes to the section and voucher program administrative plan of which we will take action under Resolution 201950. Is there anyone here tonight wishing to speak on this? Hearing done. We're going to move on to our petitions section. Is there anyone here tonight wishing to speak on any issue whatsoever? This would be your time to address the council on any issue whatsoever. Hearing done. I will close the petitions section of our agenda. I will close the petitions section of our agenda and move on to the officers and staff reports. Councillors, we have the health insurance fund recap for March 2019, the financial report summary for March 2019, and the Rock Springs Renewal Fund Financial Statements of February 2019. What's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman Tate?
Move to accept those reports and place on file.
Uh, we do have a motion to accept the officers' staff reports and place on file. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second has been called, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The records show no opposed. This is going to bring us to our council committee and board reports. Uh, we have, uh, item number one, the Rock Springs Historical Museum Board Meeting Minutes of March 13th, 2019. And councillors, I would ask, is there any other council committee or board reports that you would like?
Your Honor.
Councilwoman Wendorf.
I'd like to remind everybody of citywide cleanup, May 18th. I know you're getting tired of listening to me, but I'm getting tired of garbage, so. The supplies are going to be at the Chamber of Commerce, uh, the afternoon of May 1st. You can sign up now, all the maps, complements of our planning and zoning department are down there, uh, ready to be filled in with our volunteers. You can do it yourself, you can have a team, you know, if it's the neighborhood, your family, we don't care, we just need your able-bodied hands. Uh, there'll be free water bags and gloves down at the chamber, free lunch and prize giveaway at one o'clock at the Young at Heart Senior Center that afternoon. You don't have to do it that day, if it doesn't work out for you, you can do it anytime, whenever it's convenient for you. But if you still can make the lunch, we are happy to have you there, even if you can't pick up that morning. If you picked up even two weeks before, please feel free to come down for the free lunch. And also remember, wear long pants, sensible shoes, sunscreen, bug spray, whatever it takes. We don't want anybody being exposed to the elements. Hopefully, it'll be warmer than it is today, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Wendorf. May 18th, be there, it's that time of year and we appreciate, um, everybody that helps out and, and Glenys for your help on that as well. With that, council.
Your Honor.
Oh, yes? Oh, Mr. Councillor.
If I could, if, if people do clean up and they have a stack of garbage or bags, if they could call Public Services Office and notify us of where the, where the pile is located so we can pick it up.
Okay, we, we used to have T D carriers where they leave bags along the main roadside, but I, if it's not in one of those areas, and maybe Glenys has some more on that, I don't know.
Sometimes I know like where I pick up, I just pull them on the side of the road, but I know we, in the past, we did have them. And I, I wasn't quite sure if they were really being utilized or, you know, I'm lucky sometimes I can pull up a bag of garbage from the ditch because it's so heavy, you know, but I, the city has always been really good at picking up, you know, totally after I get it.
Counselor Wendorf, we, we do run around and look for them, but there's a lot of times in the back areas that we don't get to. And, uh, if, if, you know, we hate to have them sit there for several days because they seem to redistribute themselves. So, uh, if people could just notify us if they see or be a pile of garbage.
Also.
Let us know where it's at so we can go pick it up.
Right, and also, you know, don't waste bags on large items like mattresses, tires, bicycles, front-end axles. This is all stuff we have found. And if you find something that big and you can't pull it up, I know I always try to report it to the city or if there's a major dumping site within the city limits. Or you can let me know, you can tell us, uh, at the luncheon, um, you know, where it's located and then I can touch with Streets Department to get it picked up. Because some stuff is pretty big and, you know, it's impossible. The truck literally has to drive out and pick it up, so thank you.
And I, um, I see Mr. Lee, the Director of the Chambers here, that if you could think, maybe tell your staff or we can put something out there, if people come in to get gloves or whatever, just a little note that if they put a pile of garbage, let, let us know at the city where it is so we, we know where we're looking. Uh, with that, council, I'd entertain a motion to approve the council committee and board reports.
I'll move, Your Honor.
We do have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Let the record show no opposed. This is going to bring us to, uh, correspondence, several items under correspondence. Uh, invitation from the Board of Trustees of Western Wyoming Community College to attend commencement exercise at the Western Wyoming Community College Rushmore Gymnasium on May 17th at 7:00 PM. Two, the letter from Mike Waters regarding banning gas chambers at the animal control facility. Three, a letter from the State of Wyoming Construction Department regarding appropriated funding for Sweetwater School District Number One for future school construction projects. And four, a letter from the Art Movement regarding details of a 5K run to be held on June 8th, 2019 at Funding Park. Councillors, I would entertain a motion to approve the correspondence and place on file.
So moved.
We do have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Let the record show no opposed. This is going to bring us to the bills and claims section of our agenda. Item number one, we have the bills and claims for April 16th, 2019, councillors?
Your Honor.
Councilwoman Wendorf.
I move to approve the bills and claims for April 16th, 2019.
Councillors, we do have a motion to approve the bills and claims for April 16th, 2019, is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Abstain.
And I'm going to abstain as well. And item number two, the salaries for April 8th, 2019.
Your Honor, I move to approve the salaries for April 8th, 2019.
Councillors, we have a motion to approve the salaries for April 8th, 2019, is there a second?
Second.
Second's been called, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Let the record show no opposed. And this is going to bring us to our new business section of our agenda. Item number one under new business is going to be the request from the Finance Department for permission to dispose of surplus property. Councillors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilwoman Wendorf.
I move to approve that request and thank you everyone for cleaning house. It's like a used car lot on that list.
Yes, uh, I do appreciate, appreciate all the departments for, um, uh, doing their best to get those items on there and, um, uh, hopefully we'll, uh, uh, it's almost like a citywide cleanup. And, um, we'll, we'll have some room and hopefully benefit some of those, uh, people in the community. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Let the record show no opposed. And item number two, the approval of the annual drinking water equality report, May 2019. Councillors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman Savage.
I move to approve that.
We have a motion to approve the report, do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Let the record show no opposed. Just a shout out to those people that take care of our water, I think we take that granted sometimes. But, um, a lot of hard, hard work going in, uh, to that system and, uh, uh, quality water that we, uh, take granted that comes out of the tap, so we appreciate, uh, Joint Powers Water Board, City for all you, all that you do there. Um, item number three, the request from the Fire Department for permission to apply for the 2019 Wyoming State Office Homeland Security Preparedness Grant Program. Councillors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman Savage.
I move to approve their request for bringing application.
Uh, we do have a motion to approve this request, do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Records show no opposed. And item number four, uh, which was, um, your revision was a request from the Rock Springs Historical Museum for permission to apply for the AARP Community Challenge 2019 Grant Program. Councillors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilwoman Wendorf.
I move to approve that request.
We do have a motion to honor this request, is there a second?
Second.
Second's been called, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The record show no opposed. And item number five, the request from Sweetwater Against Trafficking and Sleep in Heavenly Peace Rock Springs for Road Closures for the Rods and Rails Event on South Main and the Parking Strip on North Front Street on June 15th, 2019 from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. North Front Street from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM for bed races and closing South Main again from 7:00 PM to 11:00 PM for a sock hop. Councillors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman Tate?
Move to approve that request.
We do have a motion to honor this request, do we have a second?
Second.
Second has been called, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? So, June 15th, there's a lot of stuff going, going on, so get down downtown, get you a team, race some beds, have a sock hop and enjoy the rods and rails, um, um, car show. This, uh, looks to be a, a very active day. We appreciate that. Item number six, the request from Sweetwater Against Trafficking for a malt beverage permit for the rods and rails car show, bed races and sock hop on June 15th, 2019 from 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM at various locations downtown. Councillors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman West?
Move to approve this request.
Uh, we do have a motion to approve this request, do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Records showing no opposed. Just going to bring us to item number seven, which is a request from Santa Fe Trail for a liquor catering permit for the reception for Chip Smith on May 4th, 2019 from 3:00 PM to midnight at Bunning Hall. Councillors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilwoman Wendorf.
I move to approve that request.
We do have a motion to honor this request, do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Records show no opposed. And this is going to bring our last item, number eight, the request from Lin Pi Incorporated Doing Businesses Bombers Sports Bar for permission to extend their serving area for their first annual poker run charity event to benefit the Red Desert Humane Society on May 18th, 2019 from 1:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Councillors, what's your pleasure? Councilman Chalata.
I move to approve this request.
We do have a motion to honor this request, is there a second?
Second.
Second's been called, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? The records show no opposed. And this is going to bring us on to the resolution section of our agenda from the Housing Authority, Resolution 2019-50.
A resolution authorizing Timothy A. Como acting in his capacity as Chairman of the Rock Springs Housing Authority Board to repeal the revised administrative plan for the Housing Choice Voucher Program dated April 7th, 2015 and replace it in its entirety, the new administrative plan dated April 16th, 2019.
Councillors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilwoman Wendorf.
I move to approve Resolution 2019-50.
Councillors, we do have a motion to approve Resolution 2019-50, is there a second?
Second.
Second has been called, roll call.
Counselor Wendorf?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Demus?
Yes.
Zadi?
Yes.
Chalata?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Merricom.
Yes. Again, from the Housing Authority, item number two, Resolution 2019-51.
A resolution accepting and approving the Rock Springs Housing Authority revised standard maintenance charges and authorizing Timothy A. Como acting in his capacity as Chairman of the Rock Springs Housing Board to execute the revised standard maintenance charges.
Councillors, what's your pleasure? Councilman Chalata.
I move to approve Resolution 2019-51.
We do have a motion to approve Resolution 2019-51, do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called, roll call.
Counselor Tate?
Yes.
Demus?
Yes.
Zadi?
Yes.
Chalata?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Wendorf?
Yes.
Merricom.
Yes, and April, thank you for your work and, uh, um, in providing the description and the information to us. Know, let us know what's going on. We're going to move on to Resolution 2019-52. And Mr. President, if I could, I'm going to recuse myself from this one being as it is, uh, uh, regards, uh, the firm of which I which, which I work. And, um, although it followed the, um, selection process, I'm going to turn this meeting over to you at this time.
Okay, council, up next, uh, next up, we have Resolution 2019-52.
A resolution accepting and approving a work order agreement for professional services with JFC Engineering Surveyors in the amount of $111,000 and authorizing Timothy A. Como as Mayor and Matthew L. McBurnett as City Clerk to execute said agreement on behalf of the City of Rock Springs.
Counsel, what is your pleasure on Resolution 2019-52?
Your Honor. Councilman Tate?
Councilman Tate.
I move to approve Resolution 2019-52.
Thank you, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Counselor Demus?
Yes.
Zadi?
Yes.
Chalata?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Wendorf?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Okay. Probably. They keep going? Council, next up, we have Resolution 2019-53.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. Next item on our agenda is Resolution 2019-53.
A resolution accepting and approving a lease between the City of Rock Springs, Wyoming and DJC Properties LLC and directing Timothy A. Como as Mayor of the City of Rock Springs, Wyoming and Matthew L. McBurnett as City Clerk of said city to execute said lease on behalf of said city.
Councillors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman West?
Move to approve Resolution 2019-53.
We do have a motion to approve Resolution 2019-53, do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called, roll call.
Counselor Zadi?
Yes.
Chalata?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Wendorf?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Demus?
Yes.
Merricom.
Yes. Um, item number five, Resolution 2019-54.
A resolution accepting and approving a lease between the City of Rock Springs, Wyoming, the Rock Springs Urban Renewal Agency and William McCurtin, James R. McCurtin and Scott McCurtin and directing Timothy A. Como as Mayor of the City of Rock Springs, Wyoming, Chad Banks as Manager of the Rock Springs Urban Renewal Agency and Matthew L. McBurnett as City Clerk of said city to execute said lease on behalf of said city.
Councillors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilwoman Wendorf.
I move to approve Resolution 2019-54.
Uh, we do have a motion to approve, uh, 2019-54, do we have a second?
Second.
Second has been called, roll call.
Counselor Chalata?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Alter?
Yes.
Wendorf?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Demus?
Yes.
Zadi?
Yes.
Merricom.
Yes, and duly noted for the history of Rock Springs, uh, for generations to come, it would be only right if we put $1 in an envelope and send it to Mr. Scott McCurtin, James McCurtin and Bill McCurtin to make sure that we held up our end of this bargain. So, I do appreciate that and, uh, let it be known. Item number six, Resolution 2019-55.
A resolution accepting and approving a lease between the City of Rock Springs, Wyoming and the Estate of Roy P. Boatbault by and through Wide Acre Properties LLC and authorizing Timothy A. Como as Mayor of the City of Rock Springs, Wyoming and Matthew L. McBurnett as City Clerk of the City of Rock Springs, Wyoming to execute said lease on behalf of the city.
Councillors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor.
Councilman Tate?
Move to approve 2019-52. Move to approve 2019-55.
We do have a motion to approve 2019-55. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. Roll call.
Counselor Savage?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Halter?
Yes.
Wendor?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Demus?
Yes.
Zadi?
Yes.
Shalata?
Yes.
Merricom.
Yes. Item number seven, Resolution 2019-56.
A resolution accepting and approving a dedication agreement from A&R Real Estate Holdings LLC, a Wyoming limited liability company, and authorizing Timothy A. Como as mayor of the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming, and Matthew L. McBurnett as city clerk of the city of Rock Springs to execute said agreement on behalf of the city.
Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor?
Councilwoman Wendor?
I move to approve Resolution 2019-56.
We do have a motion to approve 2019-56. Do we have a second?
Second.
We do have a second. This... That's work. Roll call.
Counselor West?
Yes.
Halter?
Yes.
Wendor?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Demus?
Yes.
Zadi?
Yes.
Shalata?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Merricom.
Yes. Item number eight, Resolution 2019-57.
A resolution accepting and approving a corrective dedication agreement from Sweetwater Station LLC, a Wyoming limited liability company, and authorizing Timothy A. Como as mayor of the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming, and Matthew L. McBurnett as city clerk of the city of Rock Springs to execute said agreement on behalf of the city.
Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor?
Councilman West?
Move to approve Resolution 2019-57.
We do have a motion to approve 2019-52. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. Roll call.
Counselor Halter?
Yes.
Wendor?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Demus?
Yes.
Zadi?
Yes.
Shalata?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Merricom.
Yes. And in the hopes of seeing some potholes go away, Resolution 2019-58.
A resolution accepting and approving a form of contract with Kilgore Companies LLC doing business as Lewis &amp; Lewis, Inc. in the amount of $1,37,360 and authorizing Timothy A. Como as mayor and Matthew L. McBurnett as city clerk to execute said contract on behalf of the city of Rock Springs.
Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor?
Councilman, who was that down there? I haven't heard much out of this side, but Counselor Zadi?
Move to approve Resolution 2019-58.
We do have a motion to honor Resolution 2019-58. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. Roll call.
Counselor Wendor?
Yes.
Tate?
Yes.
Demus?
Yes.
Zadi?
Yes.
Shalata?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Halter?
Yes.
Merricom.
Yes, it's been a long, hard winter. If you've driven around our town on our highways, I just went, traveled down to Park City. Unbelievable potholes. But bear with us, we're trying to rid ourselves of some of this and appreciate Mr. Kausic and his department for managing this. And hopefully, we'll see some better streets as we move forward into the spring and summer seasons. Item number 10, Resolution 2019-59.
A resolution accepting and approving a memorandum of understanding between the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming and the Rock Springs Sweetwater County Airport Board, a Wyoming Joint Powers Airport Board, and authorizing Timothy A. Como as mayor of the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming, and Matthew L. McBurnett as city clerk of the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming, to execute said memorandum of understanding on behalf of said city.
Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor, approve 2019.
We do have a motion to approve 2019-59. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. Roll call.
Counselor Tate?
Yes.
Demus?
Yes.
Zadi?
Yes.
Shalata?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
West?[1500.74]